5:00 PM. Let's go ahead and get started with a roll call, please, Carrie.
[inaudible]
Here.
Yes, turn around. Yes, Kevin Solow. Yes, Julie Harris. Yes, Julie Harris. My boss is [inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible]. Okay. Four. Uh, [inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible]. [inaudible].
Here.
[inaudible].
Here.
And Amy Gentile. [inaudible]. 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 Yes, Julie. Yes, Julie. And [inaudible].
Here.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, if everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mark, any leaders in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, folks, we're going to get to it now and move on to the presentation of the budget and review of the warrant articles. All start us off if or when it's appropriate for you to speak, please do raise your hand so that they can activate your mic since we're all wearing masks. Okay, public hearing on the 2022-2023 budget appropriations. Our mission statement, the mission of the Timberland Regional School District is to engage all students in challenging and relevant learning opportunities emphasizing high aspirations and personal growth. Here in attendance on the Budget Committee, we have from Atkinson, Julie Hammond, Catherine Consalvo, from Plastow, Sue Sherman, Michael Muscola, Julian Kiskas, Danville, myself, Kristi O'Clair, Sandown, Marissa Brown, Mark Sherwood, and our school board representative on the Budget Committee is Sean O'Neill, also from Danville. On the school board, we have from Atkinson, Brian Boyle and Amy Gentile, Plastow, Kristen Savage, Katie Nudson, Barbara Kiskas, Danville, Kimberly Farah, Sean O'Neill, and Sandown, Stephen Finnegan, and Sheila Lowe's. So, for tonight's public hearing, I'm just going to go over the meeting purposes and the rules for the public hearing. We'll cover first and second sessions of the annual meeting, and then we'll go through the articles, one through 10, as you can see here on the screen. So, the purpose of the public hearing, the purpose of tonight is to present the preliminary proposed 2022-2023 Timberland Regional School District budget appropriations to the public. To allow for public testimony and questions on the budget prior to finalization by the Budget Committee, after the public hearing, the Budget Committee will finalize the budget for presentation at the deliberative session. Only Budget Committee members may make motions to change the budget at the public hearing. Just some ground rules for the public, which doesn't look like we have many seats filled out there, but please silence all phones. When you do come to speak, please stand at the microphone. Please wait to be recognized before speaking. State your name and your town for the record. Please be respectful. Profanity, personal attacks, rude or slanderous remarks will not be tolerated, and offenders will be asked to leave the meeting. Comments shall be limited to the topic at hand, and just in case anyone's wondering, the topic at hand tonight is the budget. Speakers will be allotted up to five minutes to make their statement. Allow those who have not spoken an opportunity to do so before offering additional comment. If you're requesting to speak for the second time... If you're requesting to speak for the second time, it must be to discuss something new and not a repetition of previous comments, and the chair, which is myself, reserves the right to discontinue comment on a topic in order to move the meeting along. With that, we're going to move into the first session of the annual meeting, deliberative. You are hereby notified to meet at the Timberland Performance Arts Center, 40 Greenow Road, Plastow, New Hampshire, on Thursday, the 10th day of February 2022, at 7:00 PM. This session shall consist of explanation, discussion, and debate of warrant articles numbers two through 11. Warrant articles may be amended subject to the following limitations. A. Warrant articles whose wording is prescribed by law shall not be amended. B. Warrant articles that are amended shall be placed on the official ballot for a final vote on the main motion as amended. And C. No warrant article shall be amended to eliminate the subject matter of the article. Second session of the annual meeting, voting. Voting on warrant articles numbers one through number 11 will be conducted by official ballot to be held in conjunction with town meeting voting to be held on Tuesday, the 8th day of March 2022, at the town election polls in Atkinson, Danville, Plastow, and Sandown, New Hampshire. Atkinson voting will be conducted at the Atkinson Community Center from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Danville voting will be conducted at the Danville Community Center from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Plastow voting will be conducted at the Plastow Public Works Garage from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And Sandown voting will be conducted at the Sandown Town Hall from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Article one, election of officers. The Timberland Regional School District announces the following elected official vacancies beginning March 2022. Residents may file for candidacy at the superintendent's office, 30 Greenow Road, Plastow, New Hampshire, Monday through Friday, 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM. Filing period is from Wednesday, January 19, 2022, to Friday, January 28, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Vacancies are as follows. Danville voters, school board member, three-year term. Plastow voters, school board member, three-year term. Plastow voters, another school board member, two-year term. Sandown voters, school board member, three-year term. Atkinson voters, school board member, one-year term. Danville voters, Budget Committee member, three-year term. Plastow voters, Budget Committee member, three-year term. And Sandown voters, Budget Committee member, three-year term.
[inaudible]
Yes?
For the record, to show that the SAU office will remain open until 5:00 PM on Friday, January 28th. Per RSA, we need to hold open until 5:00 PM. We've made arrangements for that.
I said 5:00 PM, didn't I?
Well, if you read, the office hours are typically 8:30 to 4:00, but we will, they will be extended on the 20th until 5:00 PM.
Oh, I see what you mean. I see what you mean. Thanks, Kim.
Yep.
Okay, with that, I am going to hand things off to Marissa, who's going to take us through the next slide, and then we'll have a few other Budget Committee members join in to go through some of these slides.
Great, thanks, Todd. Article two, operating budget. Shall the voters of the Timberland Regional School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amounts set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session, for the purposes set forth therein totaling $75,753,607. Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be $76,303,883, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Timberland Regional School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, Roman numeral 10, and Roman numeral 16, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. Note, warrant article two, the operating budget does not include appropriations proposed under any other warrant articles. Majority vote required.
Thank you, Marissa. Kristi?
...the budget process, which was developed in accordance with applicable New Hampshire statutes, RSA's 32, 33, and 195. Incorporation of the Budget Committee's mission statement, the Budget Committee will develop a fiscally sound... Excuse me. Annual budget that will ultimately meet the needs of the district by working with district personnel and in consultation with the school board. Throughout the budget process, the Budget Committee will take into consideration district taxpayers, as well as support for staff, rigor, evaluation, and accountability initiatives that drive student achievement. Review of actual expenditures in prior years. Consideration for staffing and enrollment projections. Deliberation of capital improvements requested within the capital improvement plan, excuse me, the CIP. Collaboration and administrators, department heads, teachers, and others.
Thank you. Sherwood?
[inaudible]. Budget overview. For the 2021-2022 voted budget of $75,398,154, this excludes the capital reserve contributions voted and includes additional appropriations voted at special meeting. While the 2022-2023 proposed budget of $75,753,607, this is a net change of $355,453 as a percentage that is 0.47%. And for the budget drivers, which we define as major budget increases of greater than $25,000, benefits $560,000. Special education, $258,000. Facilities, $250,000. Student transportation, $93,000. Utilities, $80,000. Equipment increases, $70,000. Technology and supplies, $57,000. And various miscellaneous expenses, $57,000. Continuing with the budget drivers, the major budget decreases defined as being greater than $25,000. Additional adequacy aid for $991,000. And salaries, $76,000.
Thank you, Mark. Julie?
Salaries, adjusted salary by object code. Object code 1XX. Total salaries fiscal year 2023 proposed, $36,421,61. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $36,497,496. The variance is negative 76,436. Object code 210, group insurance. Fiscal year 2023 proposed is $11,222,98. Fiscal year 2022 voted was $10,565,695. The variance is $656,403. Object code 220, FICA, F-I-C-A. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $2541,363. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $2,588,681. The variance is negative 47,318. Object code 231, non-teacher retirement. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $1,093,608. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $1,110,259. That's a variance of negative 16,651. Object code 232, teacher retirement. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $5,533,876. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $5,599,877. That's a variance of minus 66,100. Object code 240, tuition reimbursement. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $218,500. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $215,507. That is a variance of $2,993. Object code 250, unemployment compensation. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $30,000. Fiscal year 2022 voted was $30,000. The variance is zero. Object code 260, workers' compensation. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $291,433. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $273,903. That's a variance of 17,530. Object code 290, other employee benefits. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $47,000. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $35,000. A variance of $12,000. The total salaries and benefits for fiscal year 2023 proposed is $57,398,939. The fiscal year 2022 voted was $56,916,419. That is a variance of $482,520.
Thank you, Julie.
Object code 310, official admin services. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $40,000. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $40,000. Variance of zero. Object code 320-340, professional services. $1,690,826 for fiscal year 23 proposed. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $1,428,283. A variance of $262,543. Oh, gosh, nervous, clearly. Object code 410, water sewer septic. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $124,380. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $58,000. A variance of $66,380. Object code 420, cleaning services. Fiscal year 23 proposed, $135,500. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $100,500. The variance of $35,000. Object code 422, snow removal. Fiscal year 2023, $10,000 proposed. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $10,000. No variance. Object code 432, plumbing and electrical repair. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $50,000. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $0. Variance of $50,000. Object code 450, construction services and buildings. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $892,200. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $1,883,593. A variance of $991,393. Object code 490, other purchase property service. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $6,500. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $6,500. No variance noted. Object code 519, student transportation. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $3,693,592. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $3,601,002. Variance of $92,590. Object code 520, insurance. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $219,900... Nope, sorry. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $205,891. Variance, $13,607. Object code 531 through 532, telephone communications. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $160,240. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $160,240. No variance. Object code 534, postage. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $4,300. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $4,300. No change. No variance. Object code 540-550, printing and advertising. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $14,570. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $16,745. A variance of $2,175. Negative... 22?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. Expense budget by object code. Object code 56X, tuition. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $3,652,000. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $3,627,000. A variance of $25,000. Object code 580, travel workshops. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $66,022. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $61,926. A variance of $4,096. Object code 610, supplies. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $1,323,781. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $1,269,605. A variance of $54,176. Object code 810, dues and fees. $88,727 for fiscal year 23 proposed. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $87,328. A variance, $1,399. Object code 930, fund transfers offset by revenue. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $2,781,686. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $2,781,686. No variance. Object code 43X, repairs and maintenance. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $576,782. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $477,749. A variance of $99,33. Object code 62X, utilities and energy. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $833,305. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $753,600. A variance of $82,99. 64... Okay. Object code 640-650, folks, info resources and software. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $1,138,771. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $1,134,315. A variance of $4,456. Object code 73X, equipment. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $726,587. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $656,963. A variance, $69,624. Object code 880, 880-889, miscellaneous expenses. Fiscal year 2023 proposed, $125,402. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $117,103. A variance of $8,299. Total operating expenses, $18,354,668 for fiscal year 23 proposed. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $18,483. Oh, I can't read, sorry. A variance of $123,067. Total expenses for fiscal year 2023 proposed, $75,753,607. Fiscal year 2022 voted, $75,398,154. The variance of $355,453. Are you done? No, I can't, I can't even... I can't even read.
Thank you, Catherine.
It's so red right now.
Okay.
It's probably in the front again.
So, that is the proposed budget, proposed operating budget. At this point, we will open it up for a public comment on the proposed operating budget. And no one has stepped up, so moving on, we are going to now move on to the default budget overview, and I would like to hand this over to Dr. Farah.
Thank you. The default budget overview, 2021-22 voted budget was $75,398,154. The 2022-23 default budget is $76,303,383. The net change is $902,229. That's a percent change of 1.20%. That excludes capital reserve contributions voted and includes additional appropriations voted at special meeting. The major budget drivers are the employment insurance increase of $655,000. SAU 106 non-union salary increase, $361,000. TSSU salary increase, $232,000. Special Ed, $158,000. Student transportation, $93,000. Utilities, $75,000. Facilities, $66,000. Retirement increase, $51,000. New equipment, $45,000. FICA increase, $28,000. Workman's comp increase, $18,000. Property and liability insurance increase, $14,000. The major budget decreases are additional adequacy aid of $991,000. The default budget is prepared by the school board under RSA 40:13-9B. The default budget is used in this subdivision means the amount of the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized for the previous year, reduced and increased as the case may be by debt service contracts and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law, and reduced by one-time expenditures contained in the operating budget and by salaries and benefits of positions that had been eliminated in the proposed budget. For the purposes of this paragraph, one-time expenditures shall be appropriations not likely to recur in the succeeding budget, and eliminated positions shall not include vacant positions under recruitment or positions redefined in the proposed operating budget as determined by the governing body unless the provisions of RSA 40:14B are adopted or of the local political subdivision. In calculating the default amount, the governing body shall follow the statutory formula, which may result in a higher or lower amount than the proposed operating budget. The 2022 default by account code, 1100 through 1199 regular programs. The prior year adopted budget, $20,156,818. Reductions or increases, this is an increase of 644,055, a decrease of $35,887 for a default budget of $20,764,986. Lines 1200 to 1299, special programs. Prior year adopted budget, $11,444,871. This is an increase of 257,743 for a default budget amount of $11,698,614. Vocational programs, $120,000. It remains the same as the previous year. 1,400 other programs, 925,793. The default budget is the same. 1,600 adult continuing ed programs, prior year budget, $143,538. Sixteen hundred adult continuing ed programs, prior year budget one forty-three five thirty-eight. The default remains the same at one four three five three eight. Support services, two thousand, student support services, prior year, three seven six one two seven. Default proposed is the same. Line twenty-two hundred instructional staff services, one million two one five four six seven in the prior year. The default stays the same. General administration lines twenty-three ten through twenty-three nineteen, other school board, prior year, two fifty two two oh. Default budget two fifty two two oh. Executive administration line twenty-three twenty to twenty-three ninety-nine, all other administration, prior year, nine four nine zero eight seven. Default budget nine four nine zero eight seven. Line twenty-four hundred to twenty-four ninety-nine, school administrative service, prior year, three million one hundred and sixty-three thousand forty-two. Default budget remains the same. Line twenty-five hundred to twenty-five ninety-nine business, prior year, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, default is the same. Line twenty-six hundred, plan operations and maintenance, prior year, three million six hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-two. There's an increase in the default of one hundred and fifty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-seven for default budget of three nine one, three seven nine one, nine six nine. Student transportation line twenty-seven hundred, prior year, three million six hundred and one thousand and two dollars. Increase of ninety-two thousand five hundred and ninety for default budget of three million six hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and ninety-two. Line twenty-eight hundred student support services, central and other, prior year, twenty million eight sixty-two two two eight. There's an increase of seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-four for default of twenty-one million six hundred and forty-two thousand and sixty-two. Going the wrong way, you don't want me to go backwards on this. Line forty-two hundred sign improvement, one hundred and fifty thousand, prior year adopted, default is one hundred and fifty thousand. Line forty-six hundred building improvement services, prior year budget eight hundred and ninety-two thousand two hundred dollars. Default budget eight hundred and ninety-two, two hundred, no change. Fund transfers by two two zero to five two two one, to food service, one million four hundred and four thousand one hundred and eighty-six, default remains the same. Prior year on five two 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 to five two two nine to other special revenue, one million three hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred, default remains the same. The total operating budget appropriations prior year were seventy-four million four hundred and six thousand seven hundred and sixty-one. The increase for the default budget is one million nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and nine. One-time appropriations that were decreased were thirty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars for default budget of seventy-six million three hundred thousand three hundred and eighty-three. Reasons for the reductions, increases in one-time appropriations. Lines twenty-six hundred to twenty-six ninety-nine, insurance and utilities increases per contractual agreements. Line eleven hundred through eleven ninety-nine, T S S U salary increases per the C B A. S A U one O six non-union salary increases and a removal of one-time new and equipment replacement. Line twenty, twelve hundred to twelve ninety-nine, special education private tuition and professional services increases. Lines twenty-seven hundred to twenty-seven ninety-nine, student transportation, contractual agreements with First Student in Durham. Lines twenty-eight hundred to twenty-nine ninety-nine, employee health insurance and workman's comp increases per the G M R, the guaranteed maximum rate, New Hampshire retirement system and FICA. I would like to make a comment before the public comment on this. The default budget reflects a higher amount than the proposed budget predominantly because there were voted in the proposed budget positions that were left in the proposed budget that the school board had eliminated prior year. That will be changed moving forward, the budget committee has now eliminated those positions.
Thank you, Dr. Fera. We're gonna open it up now for a public comment on the default budget. Okay. Moving on to the revenue budget. Uh, I didn't bring my glasses, uh, and it's kinda small here, but, uh, no. I think I can see it, but, um, so the revenue budget, Timberland School, Regional School District, F Y twenty twenty-three proposed revenue budget. Ah, that's much better. Thank you. So I'm gonna go through this similar to how we just did, uh, but I'll try to do it fairly quickly. Local revenue, unassigned fund balance, proposed twenty twenty-three, one million. F Y twenty-two voted one million. And then if you look at F Y twenty twenty-one actual, it was three million four hundred seventeen eight ninety. F Y twenty twenty actual was three million two hundred and eighty-four nine twenty-one. Regular day tuition, F Y twenty-three proposed four fif, four hundred and fifty thousand. F Y twenty-two voted five hundred and fifty thousand. Actual fiscal year twenty twenty-one, two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty-eight. F Y twenty twenty actual was three hundred and eighty-six eighty-three. Three hundred and eighty-six thousand eighty-three, summer school tuition. F Y twenty-three proposed two thousand, F Y twenty-two voted two thousand. F Y twenty twenty-one actual was zero, F Y twenty twenty actual was three thousand eight hundred and ten. Evening division adult education tuition, F Y twenty-three proposed eight thousand. F Y twenty-two voted eight thousand, F Y twenty twenty-one actual was zero. F Y twenty twenty actual was five thousand three hundred and sixty-five. Earned income, F Y twenty-three proposed forty-five thousand, F Y twenty-two voted forty-five thousand. F Y twenty twenty actual, one hundred forty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-four. F Y twenty twenty actual, thirty thousand four hundred and twenty-seven. Food service, one million is F Y twenty-three proposed, one million seven thousand five hundred, F Y twenty-two voted. F Y twenty twenty-one actual was a hundred and eight thousand two hundred and thirty-five. F Y twenty twenty actual, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-two. Other local revenue, F Y twenty-three proposed hundred thousand. F Y twenty-two voted ninety thousand. F Y twenty twenty-one actual, two hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-three. F Y twenty twenty actual, three hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five. S A U rental, F Y twenty twenty-three proposed zero, F Y twenty twenty-two voted zero. F Y twenty twenty-one actual, forty-two thousand two hundred and fifty. F Y twenty twenty actual, forty-two thousand two hundred and fifty. Local, uh, our PAC programs, F Y twenty-three proposed seventy-seven thousand five hundred. F Y twenty-two voted seventy-seven thousand five hundred. F Y twenty twenty-one actual, nineteen thousand four hundred and seventy. F Y twenty twenty actual, eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four. Under state revenue, education grant, F Y twenty twenty-three proposed eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-five. Eleven million six hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-five. F Y twenty twenty-two voted ten thousand, ten million six hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two. F Y twenty-one actual, eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-two. Eleven million one hundred and twenty-two thousand two hundred and forty-six. F Y twenty twenty actual, ten million two hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-four. Building aid, F Y twenty-three proposed zero, F Y twenty twenty-two voted zero. F Y twenty twenty-one actual, zero. F Y twenty twenty actual, one million one hundred and ten thousand five hundred and ninety-two. Vocation education, vocation education, transportation. Uh, third, F Y twenty-three proposed thirty-five thousand. F Y twenty-two voted thirty-five thousand. F Y twenty twenty-one actual, twenty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-one. F Y twenty twenty actual, twenty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-four. Child nutrition, F Y twenty-three proposed seventeen thousand five hundred. F Y twenty-two actual or voted seventeen thousand five hundred. F Y twenty-one actual, one thousand five hundred and thirty-five. F Y twenty twenty actual, seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-nine. Special education aid, F Y twenty-three proposed four hundred and fifty thousand. F Y twenty-two voted six hundred thousand. F Y twenty twenty-one actual, four hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and six. F Y twenty twenty actual was six hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-seven. Other, under state revenue, F Y twenty-three proposed ten thousand. F Y twenty-two voted ten thousand. F Y twenty twenty-one actual was forty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-four. F Y twenty twenty actual, two hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-six. Under federal revenue, federal projects, F Y twenty twenty-three proposed one million three hundred thousand. F Y twenty twenty-two voted one million three hundred thousand. F Y twenty-one actual, one million one hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and eighty-four. F Y twenty twenty actual, one million two hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-three. Lunch reimbursements, F Y twenty-three proposed three hundred and seventy-five thousand. F Y twenty-two voted three hundred and seventy-five thousand. F Y twenty twenty-one actual, six hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-three. F Y twenty twenty actual, three hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty-four. Medicaid, F Y twenty-three proposed one hundred and fifty thousand. F Y twenty-two voted one hundred and seventy-five thousand. F Y twenty twenty-one actual, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and fourteen. F Y twenty twenty actual, three hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight. Other, under federal revenue, twenty thousand for F Y twenty-three proposed, twenty thousand for F Y twenty-two voted. Thirty-two thousand fifty-one for F Y twenty-one actual. Twenty-seven thousand sixty-three for F Y twenty twenty actual. Under other revenue, transcapital reserve, zero for F Y twenty-three proposed, zero for F Y twenty-two voted. Zero for F Y twenty twenty-one actual. F Y twenty twenty actual was five hundred and thirty-one thousand. Total income for F Y twenty twenty-three proposed, sixteen million seven hundred and five thousand three hundred and sixty-five. F Y twenty-two voted fifteen million nine hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and ninety-two. F Y twenty twenty-one actual, seventeen million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and twelve. F Y twenty twenty actual is nineteen million five hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventeen. The district assessment for F Y twenty twenty-three proposed, fifty-nine million forty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-two. For F Y twenty-two voted, was fifty-nine million four hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-two. For F Y twenty twenty-one actual was fifty-four million seven hundred and ninety-two thousand one hundred and twenty-three. For F Y twenty twenty actual was fifty-three million five hundred and ninety thousand two hundred and sixty-four. Total revenue, F Y twenty twenty-three proposed, seventy-five million seven hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and seven. F Y twenty twenty-two voted, seventy-five million three hundred and ninety-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-four. F Y twenty twenty-one actual was seventy-two million six hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five. F Y twenty twenty actual was seventeen, was seventy-three million one hundred and seventy-three thousand eighty-one. Just a note at the bottom, this excludes capital reserve contribution. That was easy, thank you. Um, all right, we're gonna open that up for public comment on the revenue budget. And moving on. All right, so, uh, I'm just gonna read through these warrant articles and we'll open each one up for public comment. And then we should be toward the end then. Article three, one-year collective bargaining agreement, Timberland Administrative Assistance Secretaries and Skilled Maintenance Union. Shall the voters of the Timberland Regional School District approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Timberland Administrative Assistance and the maintenance, and maintenance union and the Timberland Regional School Board, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, estimated increase one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-two. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at the current staffing levels. Majority vote required, it's already been recommended by the school board five to zero. Uh, before we go to public comment on this, actually, I guess, I guess we don't have the public comment on this, do we? Um, the budget committee is gonna meet for an official meeting after this public hearing and then we'll, uh, put in our recommendations for the appropriate warrant articles. Article four, authorization for special meeting on cost items, shall the voters of the Timberland Regional School District, if article three is defeated, authorize the Timberland Regional School Board to call one special meeting at its option to address article three, cost items only, majority vote required. Recommended by the school board four to one. Article three and four, one-year collective bargaining agreement, Timberland Administrative Assistance. Oh, yeah, so this is where we did the public comment. Timberland Administrative Assistance and Secretaries and Skilled Maintenance Union. We're opening, opening up public comment for anyone who would like to comment on either of these warrant articles. And moving on. Article five, three-year collective bargaining agreement, Timberland Custodians Union. Shall the voters of the Timberland Regional School District approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Timberland Custodian you, Custodians Union and the Timberland Regional School Board, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, estimated increase one hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-three. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, estimated increase ninety-nine thousand one hundred and forty-six. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, estimated increase one hundred and nineteen thousand fifty. Three-year total, three hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And further to raise the appropriate, raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at the current staffing levels. Majority vote required, recommended by the school board seven, zero. Article six, authorization for special meeting on cost items. Shall the voters of the Timberland Regional School District, if article five is defeated, authorize the Timberland Regional School Board to call one special meeting at its option to address article five, cost items only. Majority vote required, recommended by the school board six to one. We'll open it up for public comment on articles five and six. Moving on. Article seven, three-year collective bargaining agreement, Timberland Food Service Workers Union. Shall the voters of the Timberland Regional School District approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Timberland Food Service Workers Union and the Timberland Regional School Board, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, estimated increase forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, estimated increase twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-four. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, estimated increase thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifty. Three-year total, one hundred thousand eight hundred and one dollars. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at the current staffing levels. Majority vote required, recommended by the school board seven, zero. Article eight, authorization for special meeting on cost items. Shall the voters of the Timberland Regional School District, if article seven is defeated, authorize the Timberland Regional School Board to call one special meeting at its option to address article seven, cost items only. Majority vote required, recommended by the school board six to one. And we'll open up article seven and article eight for public comment. Moving on. Article nine, capital reserve fund by surplus. Shall the voters of the Timberland Regional School District raise and appropriate up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be placed in the school building construction, reconstruction, capital improvement and land purchase capital reserve fund established in nineteen ninety-six with such amount to be transferred from those funds in the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first of this year, which were apportioned as capital expenses in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in accordance with the article six of the Timberland Regional School District Articles of Agreement. No amount to be raised by additional taxation, majority vote required, recommended by the school board seven to zero. We'll open up public comment for the capital reserve, article nine. We'll open up public comment for the Capital Reserve, article nine. Moving on. Article ten. General acceptance of reports. Shall the voters of the Timberland Regional School District accept reports of agents, auditors and committees as written in the twenty twenty-one annual report? Majority vote required. Recommended by the school board seven to zero. Estimated tax rates. Estimated tax rates, twenty twenty-one, Atkinson, nine dollars and fifty-three cents. Twenty twenty-two projected, six dollars and forty-four cents. Danville, twenty twenty-one, fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Twenty twenty-two, eleven dollars and forty-four cents. Plastow, twenty twenty-one, thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Twenty twenty-two is twelve dollars and twenty-three cents. Sandown, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three dollars and two cents. Note at the bottom, combined local and state school rate. This is based on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three TRSD proposed budget. Yes?
Could I just state that all towns, as far as I know, were reassessed this current year? So while the tax rates are going down, the property values went up. So just because your tax rate looks like it's lower doesn't mean your taxes are going to be lower.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Farrar. All right, I'm just announcing special meetings. The budget committee will meet immediately following this public hearing to finalize the proposed budget for the deliberative session. And I'll leave this one up here. We will see the public for the first session of the annual meeting, the, AKA the deliberative, Thursday, February tenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M. in the Performing Arts Center. Voter check-in opens at six P M. Thank you for your continued support. Timberland together. Yes, Mr. O'Neil?
Comment something earlier that you, uh, made a comment to as regards to the Danville voting will be at the Danville Community Center. It's from eight A M. to eight P M. and not seven P M. as written.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. That just changed last year, didn't it?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks, everyone. Uh, with that, we're going to adjourn the public hearing. The time is seven fifty-seven. Thank you very much, have a nice night.